Call the special board of alderman meeting to order on Monday, May 20, 2019. The prayer will be offered by deputy city clerk Judith Boilo and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and the greater happiness of all fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harry Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cleese. Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Willschier.
Here.
Eleven present and four absent.
I did hear Alderman Gidge is still under the weather. He's hoping to rejoin us next week. Alderwoman Cleese will not be here this evening, and neither will Alderwoman Kelly. Tonight, we have a public hearing on Resolution 19-136 authorizing the formation of two voluntary nonprofit corporations under RSA 162G for the Performing Arts Center. I'm going to invite Director Cummings and his people up.
Thank you.
And you can give us an overview before we have a public hearing, please. Thank you. Or you could introduce your guests as well.
Anybody could sit on our side. Thank you.
For the record, I'm the director of economic development, and thank you for having me this evening. Joining me, I have our tax consultant, our tax attorney, John Kaminsky, and Neil Cannon, our new market tax credit consultant, and Celia Leonard from our corporations' counsel's office to help us with the conversation this evening. Thank you all for joining me. So I did a quick PowerPoint presentation, which I'd like to just quickly go through for you in very high level, and then open it up to questions as you may have them. So just a quick refresher, and by the way, there's a memo with some backup material in your agenda that goes into more detail. This PowerPoint just picks out the highlights of that communication mainly for the conversation this evening. So in that memo, and by the way, there was a typo, I apologize, it referenced a previous meeting we had as December 11th. Technically, that meeting was on December 20 of 2018. These slides were all presented to you back then, and so this is just a little bit of a refresher for you. So essentially, some key elements, just to remind you, we're going to be needing a QualigB. QualigB assists business, is an assisted business corporation or partnership that exists for qualified area. It's referred to as a qualified area low-income community business. We refer to it as the acronym QualigB. The big thing here is the City of Nashua municipal corporation cannot be a QualigB. But we can act as a leasing in the deal structure. So again, that's just something we've discussed previously. Wanted to just remind you of that. Again, another issue that I wanted to just call out to your attention, which is the leverage that we are striving for, which is we would be, for every million dollars we invest, we would be trying to leverage 39% gross, which yields a net of somewhere between 25 and 30%. For this conversation, we can say 28%. I also want to take a moment and just remind you all that we're working on projections and modeled numbers. They are subject to change. By no means is this definitive, but it gives you an idea of what we're looking at from an order of magnitude type conversation. I say that to you because we are pricing the tax credit at 85 cents on the dollar. That's a good conservative estimate, but you know, it's subject to market principles, and so therefore, it may be a little north of that, maybe a little south of that, but that's a good target for us to be using. So here it is here again. Again, if we have a net equity of 281,000 off of that million dollars, the credit would be 390. It would net us 281,000, which is approximately a 28% leverage on our debt. So that's the idea of the new market tax credit that we are working toward. So some other key elements, just to remind you, of compliance period is seven years for a new market tax credit. And we'll be working with CDEs. The CDEs are the entities that receive the allocation from the U.S. Treasury, technically the CDFI fund. They are the entity that's empowered to go out and place that allocation in various projects, and they are critical to making new market tax credit projects happen. So here's the deal structure we presented to you back on December 20th, and I wanted to point this out to you. Because we ended the conversation right here at master tenant, and I point that out to you because as this conversation evolves, we're developing the governance structure for this transaction. But ultimately, it had everything that we had discussed previously. We were what we're referring to as an intermediary lender here is now what we're referring to as a senior lender, and here's the QualigB. But this was also modeled on a little bit higher numbers. We were looking at netting around 7.2, or I'm sorry, netting 5.2 off of a new market tax credit of 7.2. We've now advanced this model a little bit further, and this is an updated model for today's conversation where we're actually looking to net about 4.2 million. All these numbers are in your handout. But essentially, it's the same thing that we've discussed previously. City of Nashua has a bond. We would push the bond, part of the bond through to a senior leveraged lender. The senior leveraged lender would put it into an investment fund with the CDE. CDE would create this sub-CDE investment fund structure. The equity investor, which is our private sector money, would come in on the other side, and we would push it all down into the QualigB. There would be some money from the City of Nashua that would go down into the QualigB directly. Then the city would be the master tenant, as we previously discussed. And here's where the deal structure has updated a little bit, and I don't want to take a moment and just let you know that this is a working concept over here. We're still working through some various issues. The reason we're here before you this evening is actually really just to authorize these two structures in red, and that's what the resolution explicitly speaks to. But we will be coming back before you, if all goes according to plan, to bring, hopefully in one night, one resolution, one omnibus type of piece of legislation, this structure right here that we're discussing this evening. So you have the master tenant, and then what ultimately will be over here is another entity that what I would suggest would be substantially similar to what we have in place right now for the Hunt Building, the Hunt Library. And that entity would be charged with overseeing spectacle management as well as the building itself. And then there's another entity, which is the 501(c)(3), which in theory would have the endowment fund. And that would be, it cannot be the same two entities, to be clear, but it would be a fourth entity to place the funds that we'd be raising for that endowment. So very quickly, what does Resolution 19-136 do? It authorizes the city to form up to two voluntary nonprofit corporations under the provisions of RSA 162G. Pursuant to RSA 162G 15, it ordains these two entities as public corporations. Why is that important? The City of Nashua cannot directly participate in the new market tax credit transaction as a QualigB. Furthermore, the industry prefers municipal corporations to not be a senior leveraged lender. We are doing this now for an effort to be in good position to act expediently for these community development entities. We want to be able to move quickly and place their, so they can place their new market tax credit allocation. Project readiness is a key to being successful. So just a couple additional pieces of context for this conversation this evening. The two entities we're talking about, the QualigB and the senior leveraged lender, they're specific entities being created for a sole purpose, and they're only going to be executing their one function, whether that's to be the QualigB and actually manage the development of the building itself for the sake of the new market tax credit transaction, or the senior leveraged lender, which is an entity basically to lend into the project. These entities will terminate after the compliance period ends for the new market tax credit, and they are not permanent. But they are essentially needed to effectuate the new market tax credit transaction that we've been discussing for a while now. And what I've shown you, and what has been developed by our consultants, is a tried-and-true deal structure that has been vetted by CDEs, and this is a very consistent way of putting these deals together. This is just a higher-level overview of the same deal structure that I had put together to help put this document together. So with that, Madam President, I'd like to turn it back to you. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the resolution that's before you this evening.
Thank you, Director Cummings. Does anyone here have questions? Alderman Jettie.
I noticed in the resolution, there's a proposed initial membership of the board of directors, and it's a lot of the same people are on both boards, but not all of them. And is there a reason for that?
Director Cummings.
Yes, I'll actually have our tax counsel speak to that.
It's important for New Markets Tax Credit purposes that the two entities not have a common majority control. So we've got five member boards on both of these corporations. Two people overlap, three do not, just so that we don't have a common majority control. That's what the tax opinion writers are going to be looking forward to do the transaction.
Okay. Thank you.
When we speak, could we please give our names so that the transcriptionist knows? That was Neil Cannon for the record.
No, no. No, John Kaminsky.
John Kaminsky. See? Sorry about that.
And my name's Ernest Jettie.
My name's Mudd now, right? Alderman Laws, did you have a question?
More kind of broad question. How excited am I right now about this process?
So if I may, Madam Chair, we don't know, but I did receive an article today where the U.S. Treasury is quoted as saying they're going to be looking to make announcements in the month of May. So sometime in the next two weeks, fingers crossed, we'll hear. But just because that announcement is made, by no means is that a guarantee that we're going to be receiving an allocation, but we are working very closely with a handful of CDEs, and we remain very, very hopeful.
Paul Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Just to clarify, if we don't get these, the whole project dies.
Director Cummings.
Not necessarily. The city would have to raise $4 million in private money, or somehow other way come up with a funding source, but I think, to your point, this new market tax credit is essential to closing the gap in this project.
You're set. Alderman Laws? Anyone else have questions? Alderman Karen.
It's just a comment. This group, because they're two committees, should that have come to personnel, or is it because it's a short-term group of people for a section of the PAC project?
Director Cummings?
Just a question.
We'll answer that.
If I may, I'm going to ask Deputy Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard to answer that.
Oh, sure. This is Celia Leonard, Deputy Corporation Counsel. We were looking, this isn't a traditional committee for the city, so, because it really is naming incorporators for a nonprofit under another statute, under the 292. I always, there's a one in there somewhere. I never know if it's 291 or, yeah, 292.1. So by naming them in the resolution, we figured that would allow the board to then refer internally however they saw a fit. But it is, it does terminate. These organizations will terminate after the compliance period is done, so it is distinct from other things the city has done before.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I think that, great clarification, so that the question has come up as to why, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Not that I need more work.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
I mean, just to start, nothing dies unless we let it. So if we did run into a problem with the CDF, can't even remember the initials anymore, if we do run into the new market tax credit issue, these two structures are not necessarily relevant to the city doing individual, like its own fundraising system or any other strategies. Is that correct?
Director Cummings?
That's correct.
Okay. Alderman Gathwright.
I think I'm still struggling a little bit with the nonprofit. So in short terms, what would you, how would you separate the two?
This is essentially going to be a nonprofit created to own the project. This is going to be a nonprofit created to finance the project or to lend into the project. Very simple.
Okay. So if I was donating, which one am I donating to? The top one?
This one over here.
Oh.
Pimple.
The one over there in the white?
Yep. This one is the nonprofit charitable organization, which would be the 501(c)(3). The reason why I suggest you, I mean, of course, these groups probably would be happy to take your money, but you wouldn't get your tax deduction I think you'd be looking for.
Okay. That's my question.
So, yeah, so I'm being obviously glib with that answer, but the relationships that we've developed with City Arts Nashua, the fiscal agent for City Arts Nashua is really speaking to this organization over here.
Thank you. That clarified it for me.
Alderman Dowd.
So we already have an established organization that can accept private funds for this project.
Yes.
Good answer.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola.
And I guess to follow up on the legislation we're having the public hearing on, it's just where the nonprofits in red.
Correct.
Not the ones in the lower right-hand corner. So there's four of them, but I'll make sure with the legislation.
So if I may, Madam President, that's actually a great segue to just call your attention to the communication that was in the agenda, where Attorney Leonard put together an additional document that kind of outlines, and this was done at this body's request at our December 20 meeting, where you wanted to get a high-level overview, and by no means is this 100%, it's subject to change, but it gives you an idea of the various approvals that will still be forthcoming by this body to effectuate the transaction that we're working toward. The goal that I would like to work towards is to try to get these all bundled into one document, so we can have one conversation later on this summer to make it as expedient as possible. But nonetheless, these are the various differing elements that are still going to be necessary to move this forward. We are here this evening, really, to once again show the CDEs that we are very serious about this project, and we're doing everything we can to put the best foot forward.
Alderman Tenza.
So could I just ask, the two nonprofits that we're talking about tonight, the two that are up there in red, will they have any sort of relevance after this conversation on new market tax credits after the seven-year period, or will those essentially, we'll be able to get rid of those, and then the two that will stand are the NDC, I guess, C and D that you have on the right side of your graph?
Director Cummings?
That's correct. You're understanding the graph appropriately.
Anyone else? Alderman Tenza.
If I could just clarify, maybe. So these two that we're setting up really just kind of pass through nonprofits for the purpose of accepting the money, or in accepting the bond proceeds, to therefore transfer into the project, and then have the project up and running, and the rest will just be managed by the two nonprofits that are left.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything further? Saying none, I'm going to open the public hearing on Resolution 19-136. I will take testimony in favor.
I think I'm the only member of the public here tonight. You got a two-hour meeting schedule?
Oh, jeez.
So we'll take a little bit of time. My name is Fred Tivo. I live in 24 Cheyenne Drive in Nashua. I have a few questions, and I'll make some comments, and I'm done. I'm glad you put up the deal diagram, Mr. Cummings, and I'm trying to figure out, first of all, the need for two nonprofits. Now, the left on top collects the money, and the bottom operates the venture. Could you explain again what these two red positions mean?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually going to defer to Neil Cannon on this.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes. You need two organizations, as we said earlier, with two different governing bodies, not directly overlapping, because you can't, number one, you can't have Organization A lending to itself. And number two, the city cannot own, under the statutes, cannot be the beneficiary of the project except indirectly. So you need Organization A, which is not identical to B, to make the loan. Then you need Organization B, which is not identical to A, to receive the proceeds of the loans and execute a master lease with the City of Nashua.
Something in the right of about transferring the property, the $2 million building, to one of these corporations?
One of these corporations, the QualigB, Organization B, will purchase the building for $2 million.
Now, how can the City of Nashua be the master? It will no longer own the buildings.
That's the point. It will be a tenant of the QualigB.
Okay. So Nashua's going to be a tenant.
Because it cannot own the building and take advantage of this program.
Okay. So that's the lower red. What about the, I still don't quite understand, then the upper left red?
The upper level becomes the lender. The bond proceeds are passed on to that lender. We call it the senior leveraged lender. And it makes the loan into an investment fund, where it's combined with the equity investment by the New Markets Tax Credit buyers, and forced down through a sub-CDE into loans to the QualigB.
The loan, what loan are we talking about? $2 million is donated, apparently, to this lower entity.
There are two loans. One is for $4.2 million, which is a new market tax credit amount, and one is for $10.4 million, which is the amount of the bond that goes into Organization A.
Where's $10.4 come from?
Bond proceeds.
The bond? The bond proceeds?
The bond proceeds are $15 million. Of that $10.4, a little bit more than $10.4, let's call it $10.5, goes into the senior leveraged lender, which is Organization A, who...
I thought that Cummings had written a memo, which I've been pounding on for a long time, where he claimed that the construction funds were $11.5 million. The building has already been paid for. There was architectural fees. So you take the $15.5 million of the bond, you subtract the $2 million already spent, and you spend, subtract another $1 million, $1,700, I think, already spent or allocated to the architecture and the OEM firm. That is now going down to $10.4 million. How'd you go up to $10.4 million?
The total project cost is 19, over $19 million.
I'll get there in a minute. I'm talking about, how'd you go up to $10.4 million?
That is the portion of the bond that we get really difficult here, but we made a decision, I forced this on Tim, that the qualified equity investment that we thought was, we were competitive to get, was $15 million. That's the most we thought we could get. So in order to get that, it requires that we put $10.4 million through the system. And the balance of the project cost goes directly, the $4.5, goes directly down the side and into the QualigB.
If I may.
Director Cummings?
What I believe is being also discussed here is a cash flow issue, and what we're doing is actually putting in money for the sale of the property, that $2 million, which the city would get paid back at closing. But we're taking the opportunity while we can to leverage those funds. And so you have items like that, you have items like soft costs, which are all on top of the building costs, which are going to be in excess of $15 million when it's all in the total project. But what we're doing is we're leveraging $10 million for our benefit to yield something in a range of a 28% leverage. That's essentially what we're trying to do here. That other differential of that $10 million, for this conversation, let's just keep it simple and say it's five, we will be pushing it down in through to the QualigB, and that's what we're referring to as our equity investment, which is how you yield that 19-ish figure that we just mentioned.
Let me understand something. The $4.5 million is your new market tax credit money? Now, I'm really confused. I don't know where the $10.4 comes from. Now he says that there's $2 million from the building that you're going to deed over to this corporation, and then you generate a loan. Now, if you deed them over to the building, how do you generate a loan unless this corporation takes a loan on the building? Is that what you're talking about?
Exactly what we're talking about.
All right. So why don't you say so? So you expect the city, yeah, nothing to smile about, first I've heard of this one. So as I understand it, you could take the building, deed it over to this top corporation, whatever the...
Top corporation.
Now, I can't, the numbers, you know, these LQBR don't mean anything to me. But you're going to take the building, deed it over to this corporation, and they're going to borrow against it, $2 million. How does that $2 million become $10.4 million?
They're going to borrow against it, they're going to borrow $14 million against it. $14,700,000 against it, and then...
Against the building?
Against the building as improved, yes.
$14 million against a $2 million building? Who's going to do that lending?
No, no, no. The building, when improved, will be valued at...
Oh, when it's approved?
When it's improved.
Oh, okay. Didn't make that clear. So when it's a performing arts center design, finished, you figure you're going to have $14.7, $14.7 million against that building?
We're going to have that plus the $4.5.
Oh. So $10.4 is against the building, the $4.5 is the market tax credit. Okay. So now comes clearer to me. All right. And the purpose of that lower red, what is the purpose of that lower red one again?
It's the owner of the building and the borrower.
And then what's the purpose of the top left guy?
It's the lender.
The lender. The lender. Let me, let me understand that one. Top-left guy owns a building.
No.
Who owns a, who owns a building?
Who's on first?
Yeah, who's on first? Who owns a, who owns a building?
Option B. I mean, I'm sorry, Entity B, which is the bottom of the diagram, the bottom one, is the borrower and also the building owner.
Now, why do you need the top-left, top-red guy?
Because we, thanks, Tim, for leaving me out here like this. Because we need, we need an entity to make the loan. The regulations discourage the city from being that lender. So the city is going to pass, it's, the city receives bond proceeds of $15 million.
Yeah.
It's going to make a loan to Entity A, who's going to pass that through to the investment fund. The investment fund is going to combine that loan proceeds with equity investment of $4.9 million, which is 39% of $15 million at 85 cents a dollar, to, to total that up. And then they're going to push that down to the sub-CDE, an amount of $15 million, after they take out their fees. Sub-CDE is going to take out their fees and lend $14,700,000 to the bottom entity. The total project cost is 19.2. So the rest of that, the balance of that, 19.2 minus 14.7 is 4.5. And that's coming down directly to the Qualig B.
From the New Market money?
From, no, from the, from the City of Nashua. That, that is-
Yeah, where did that additional $4.5 million come from then?
4.5 plus 10, 4825 equal, 4.5 plus 10.5 equals $15 million, which is the amount of the bond.
Have we already spent quite a bit of money on that bond? Have we already paid for the building with that bond?
No.
How did we buy the building? Cash.
City. Cash.
In this instance, you're, the Qualig B is going to, with the proceeds of the loans, is going to buy the building from the city. The city's going to receive $2 million.
You're going to get $2 million back, okay. Well, pretty complicated. What is your, so your target for the New Market, what's your target for the New Market Tax Credit? What do you hope to get, what do you hope to get for New Market Tax Credits?
Director Cummings?
Net $4.2 million. Again, I just want to caution everyone that these are projected modeled numbers and they're subject to change, but that's, that's what we're currently looking at.
That's after the 15% fee?
That's net, so that is after the fees.
So you expect to get about $5.00 million?
Correct.
Well, that's a complicated, and one more question. I thought the RSA, that this whole scheme is based on, with these two corporations that you're forming, was for low-income areas. Is that incorrect?
That's true.
Well, since when is downtown a low-income area?
Director Cummings?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, the RSA was not created for low-income areas. What I believe you're referring to is the New Market Tax Credit Program specifically, which is created for low-income areas. And I will actually defer to Neil Cannon, who can, who can speak to, to this very specific point.
It's something pop, really negative, but something really positive, but negative. The, the low end, the downtown Nashua census tract, which is the sub-city areas upon which eligibility for New Markets is based, is, there were 104 census tracts in the state eligible for New Markets. This one ranks 104th worse. It's the worst census tract in the state in terms of percent of-
Medium family income.
Medium family income versus the state average. The worst, 104 out of 104.
So it disqualifies other?
It qualifies because it's severely distressed. It's the whole purpose of this project, to attract people to spend their money in downtown.
Well, I know that it's the purpose of the project, but I didn't know it was a low-income area.
Oh, it is.
So the medium-income area in downtown, what is the number?
It's something like $23,000.
That's about 30, that's about 40 or 50%. That's single person.
That's about 30% of the state median.
30%. Yeah, that's low income. Okay, well, that's the questions I have. Now, let me make my comments. You know, I've not been against a performance art center. I prefer to have it at Court Street, but that battle was long ago lost, to put it at the current location. The problem that I have, and I'm not going to comment on this whole subject, is there's a memorandum from Tim Cummings, who set a construction cost, and it's $7 million. I have a copy of it with me in case somebody says that didn't apply. I'm holding it right here in my hands. Construction cost for this job is $11.5 million. He added $2 million for the building, $1 million for audiovisual, $1 million for architecture. Basically, $1.5 million to build this for construction. Well, there's a, finally, the steering committee finally posted the minutes, took a while. And on 6 March, there's a notation, the minutes, and I read most of them, not all of them, I cut that one. Mr. Cummings says the project is going to cost us between $18 million and $19 million, which is the first time that's ever been announced, by Mr. Cummings. You may recall that I've mentioned many times here that the fantasy construction company, working with Webb on the original design of the 550-seat theater, estimated the project to be $16.4 million. The $16.4 million included 33% GNA and overhead costs and inflation costs and contingency costs and insurance costs and bonding costs. Well, guess what? Last week, the architects met with the steering committee, Mrs. Laws was there, and Miss Goldier, Melissa Goldier was there, I don't know who, well, Mr. Cummings was there, and I don't know who else, and Mr. Dowd was there.
And President Wiltshire.
And President Wiltshire was there. And guess what? The architects announced that the cost of this project for the 750 seats, which you need, I'll get that in a minute, the project cost is announced to be $18 million, not including soft costs, which are typically GNA, bonds, insurance, profit, and contingency. I can ask Mr. Dowd, who runs the school construction projects, typically, and I've been involved in the school construction, I think the contingency is all the rest of above the two hard costs, typically 25 to 30%. Let's give it 20%. But they also mentioned inflation costs, because the project hasn't started, and what they call, a new cost called tariff cost, because of Trump's pretty expensive tariff costs. So if I add to that $18 million, and it includes, by the way, a million dollars, not for the theater, but a million dollars to fix the roads in the street and pull the transformer over and the utility pole and all the rest of the stuff, outside the theater, if you add 30% GNA, which I think is a more reasonable number for something of this size, you have $23.5 million. If I low blow, a lowball the GNA cost and inflation cost, tariff cost, contingency cost, bond cost and insurance cost, then the project is going to cost $21.5 billion. Construction, not counting the architects, not counting the building, and not counting audiovisual. So you have a disparity here. Let's take the $21.5 million against the $11.5 million of the original estimate of $10 million deficiency. So now you're trying to do is make up $10 million with the combination, not the hocus-pocus you're talking about, but the $10 million made up with New Market Tax Credits and private contributions. So I do have a question. How many private contributions have been collected so far, not counting New Market Tax Credits? Is there a number?
Director Cummings, do you have a number?
Nobody knows a number. And my assumption is zip, or close to it. I know, I've raised money for the memorial and it was four years of agony. It didn't cost anywhere near this kind of money. So how are you going to make up this efficiency of $10 million? Maybe it's high if the GNA is 30%, if it's over 30%, or a fantasy 33%. It's going to be $12 million. And now I'd like somebody here on this board to begin to address what the City of Nashua is going to do in case you can't make up the deficiency of $10 or $12 million. Start getting realistic. I'm not against performance art center. I don't think you can start turning these architects into magicians, because they're trying to create a 750-seat theater. Why? So there's no endowment fund required, because the operator called Spectacle Management says that they will operate this place for three years, and guarantees them writing, without any subsidy. Now, after three years, maybe they do require subsidy, but right now there's no subsidy. So you don't need an endowment fund. So whatever money is collected here should be thrown into the construction job. But you cannot ask these architects to make up a $10 million deficiency. You have people in the steering committee talking about cutting maybe elevator down into stairs, or cutting down one set of stairs, two sets of stairs into one set of stairs, or maybe the loading dock a little smaller, I forgot all the little things they talked about. No way is any discussion going to make up for $10 to $12 million. The problem is that this whole operation started with the suggestion of a budget. And I remember Clements, he's not here, he says, "Let's throw to the people for a vote", because he couldn't get them a two-thirds vote for the bond. He went for a vote, and as President, it's a $15.5 million job. Now, if you add the building, you add the other $4 million I just mentioned, the building, the AV and architecture, architecture also more than a million, so $1,700,000 if you add the construction manager. This job is not going to be $10 million over, it's going to be $14 million over, maybe $16 million over. You've got to start dealing with this. You either stop the project, which I hope you don't do, or you start coughing up some money. You're not going to get all this money. In fact, the whole New Market strategy, it's, I understand, it's highly competed, I understand from whoever made the presentation, highly competitive, not all guaranteed that Nashua will get that, not all guaranteed you get the 4, the 5.2 million, because you need the 4.5 plus the 15%. None is guaranteed. You have to start making a plan. Now, it's not impossible for the City of Nashua to come up with another $10 million. You bond $300 million, you, you bond $37.5 million for road construction. You write contracts for $300 million for the teachers' contract, $300 million at a time. But you have to start dealing with this, and you have to start getting honest with the citizens of Nashua about the true cost of this project. That's why I'm here, so I'm addressing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to correct for the record a couple misrepresentations that were just said a second ago. And I don't want to belabor the point or go too far off subject here, because we are, after all, here for a very specific resolution. And I want to make sure we stay on track for what it is that we're here to, to speak on this evening. But we do have the press here, and I want to correct for the record some, some of the statements that were just made. First and foremost, this idea that, you know, the project number being higher than what had, you know, and has never been articulated by me, I'm just going to point up to the slide that was presented to you on December 20th, which outlines a project of something in the order of magnitude of $18 million. So even in December 20th of 2018, we were talking about a project as high as, as this. I want to remind you to the fact that you amended the bond back last fall, that would allow you to reappropriate the New Market Tax Credit money, that's some $4 million and in various ways. Lastly, I also want to mention the, the $18 million figure that was referenced. That was at the start of schematic design. The conversation further continued, where the designers and architects were able to get the building project at $13.5 million with a charge of dropping the price down to something like $12.5 million. There is a very clear understanding that we are designing to a budget, and we are also making sure that we live with that $15.5 million commitment that the City of Nashua has authorized us to, 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 to work toward, and we will, we will do that. We will not, not look for additional funds from the City of Nashua beyond that $15.5 million. I'll just conclude my comments by also saying that the feasibility study developed a concept that is much different than what is being designed right now. And it was a conscious decision by folks when designing this, this performing arts center, that they wanted to design it appropriately and in the right way, and, and they've made a conscious choice to look at additional elements that weren't part of the, the feasibility study initially. So with that being said, Madam President, I, I think I've done a pretty good job of correcting the record and making it clear, except for one last point, which is, depending on how you define the project, and this evening we've been talking about a $19 million project, that is not counting the endowment fund that's been, being set up. If you count the endowment funds that are also being set up, that could bring the project up in total of something like 21-ish, 22 million. It really depends on how you define, quote unquote, what the project is. And it is a fair point to make as to how high we want to capitalize that endowment fund. We made a commitment very early on that we would have an endowment fund, working very hard to make sure that we retain money into an endowment fund until this group and, and the steering committee otherwise instructs me that we can repurpose those funds in a different way. But I haven't heard that yet, so we are, we are still maintaining that, that money for, for working capital, despite the fact, and yes, I do agree with, Spectacle Management has said that he can run the, the performing arts center without the need of a subsidy. But those are conversations that we will have as this project continues to evolve, and will be very important as we're looking at that left-hand side of the, the project, where we're talking about the stewardship of the endowment fund and, and the building and the contract with Spectacle Management, which are conversations that we'll have if we're successful later on this summer. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I will now take Ted Alderman down.
Just one quick thing. The last seven school projects, going back 16 years, we have never spent a significant amount of our contingency money. It was always carried forward into the next project. So you have contingency for the unknown unknowns, and we've been pretty good at making sure that we know what we need to know.
Thank you. I'm going to just finish the public hearing. Anyone here that wishes to give testimony in opposition to Resolution 19-136?
As I'm the only member of the public here, I'll wait for the next turnaround. Mr. Cummings, and I appreciate what Cummings does. I already told privately, I think he does a good job managing things. He does a terrible job estimating things. I have a memorandum here, and holding in my hand, and it says in his memorandum, it's the only published memorandum ever presented by Mr. Cummings. Construction costs $11.5 million. And the bond adds up to 15.5, and the assumption was you have a $4 million endowment fund to subsidize operation of the performance art center. $4 million was not going to spend on construction. So $1.5 million, it's on the record. You're now facing a project around $20 to $22 million. So even if you go against the 15.5, you're $7.8 million off. Even if you spent the entire endowment fund against construction, you're $7.8 million off. I think this board ought to ask Mr. Cummings to present some spreadsheets next time he makes a presentation, not so much our waving, as specifically on the figures, because this- this board's going to have to own up, you know, you have all these investment things and, you know, maybe this leveraging thing and all the financial stuff, all with funny money. Some of you are going to get this market tax credits with funny money. You have to ask Mr. Cummings, he's perfectly capable of doing it, he's a capable guy, go up with detailed spreadsheets, take the information presented by the architects. He can talk to them in private about how much the GNA comes to and how much the insurance comes to. You have Harvey Construction, who is the estimator, a very competent estimator, you know, they do all the work from the schools. They can show you. You can ask Harvey Construction to come before you. This is Mr. Cummings, who's basically not a financial guy, he's a economic development director. His job is to promote things. Get Harvey in here. Harvey is in the book to estimate his job. That's what you're paying him, what, $400,000, $500,000 for? And get them to give you details of how this construction goes forward, whatever, is the $4.5 million that come in, private money doesn't come in? How low can you go before you no longer have a 750-seat viable theater? My God, guys, you're elected to do your job. Do your job. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to give testimony in favor? Anyone else wishing to give testimony in opposition? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 7:51. Thank you.